Board of Commissioners meeting for November the 19th. I've got a few people here this evening, welcome, and thank you for being here and being with us. If you will, join me in our invocation and then we'll stand for our pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for this evening, and thank you for this beautiful day we've had. Lord, we want to give thanks for all things as we have Thanksgiving upon us, Lord. Be with each and every one of us, Lord, and our families and friends and Stanley County citizens this year during our Thanksgiving holiday. Bring everyone together and be with those, comfort everyone, ones that are sick, Lord, and be with the law enforcement officers, our military personnel, and folks who are out serving our citizens, Lord, during the holidays. Be with them, comfort them, bring them home safe to their families, Lord. Be with us as we go into this meeting tonight, Lord, and give us wisdom and help us make the right decisions for the benefit of our citizens here in Stanley County, Lord. In your name I pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to take a look at your agenda. Are there any adjustments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Commissioner Swain. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Item one, Commissioner recognition. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can get, excuse me, can I get the four board members who, this would be their last meeting to, just to come down front. We have some plaques and some other recognition. If the other board members want to join us down there, you're certainly welcome as well, so.
Which, as tradition normally is, those members that are coming off the board, we typically recognize them for their service for the last four years or however many years they were on the board. So the first one is presented to Joseph Burleson. An appreciation for your leadership, integrity, generosity, citizens of Stanley County, founder of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, December 14th to December 18th, presented to state on the 19th of November 2018. Thank you. Appreciate your services, sir. The next one, same thing, to Commissioner Eifert. Thank you for your service. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. This is Jan Louden. This is the second one you've actually received because you've been on the board for eight years, but this is for your last term, December 14th, November 18th. Thank you for your service. And the last one is to Mr. McIntyre. For his 20 years of service on the board, we really appreciate all your leadership and thank you very much. We actually have another special recognition for Commissioner McIntyre. Commissioner McIntyre, because he has 20 years of service, we were going to do something a little different at a block or something, but we decided that due to your passion about animal control, we actually did a, on your behalf, we moved $100 from our general fund into the animal control reserve fund on your behalf for, to help advocate the animal control shelter moving forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Could I say one thing before we go? And I'll agree. When I ran for Commissioner in 1998, people asked me, "Why are you running for Commissioner?" And I said, "Well, it sounded kind of corny, but Stanley County's been good to me. Stanley County provided me with a good place to catch a fish, provided me with a 30-year career in the school system." And I've enjoyed being a Commissioner for the citizens. And I want to thank all the citizens for putting up with me for 20 years, especially those who supported me with their voters. Luckily, I never done this without the support of my family, especially my wife Sue. She's been a mainstay for 20 years and behind me without her own, so I want to thank everybody. And I still enjoy being a kind of Commissioner, just by somebody else. Thank you.
Stanley County Health Department presenter David Jenkins. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, how are y'all? Excellent. Commissioner McIntyre, we appreciate the donation to animal control. We'll be sure to put it to good use. Commissioners, I was asked to present on naloxone as it relates to Health Department's role in our community in addressing the substance misuse this evening, so got several slides I want to share with you. Obviously, you can stop at any moment if you have questions. Hopefully, I can answer them. If not, I'll be sure to get back with you at a later date and get your questions answered. So, let's go back to 2013. Good Samaritans and naloxone access law was enacted. Since then, we've had 96,000 overdose rescue kits distributed, whatever, 12,000 confirmed overdose reversals. North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition is a grassroots organization within North Carolina. It's national, but it's also in North Carolina as well. Stanley County data, number one in the state from June through October. The handle I provide you was just specifically to ED overdoses in the county. We came up as number one, again, based on a rate, unfortunately, in the state for overdoses. So, again, five counties, five months in a row now, we've been number one, unfortunately. So, this information we shared, I'd like to thank EMS for providing this information on, as you see on the screen here, about the overdoses. The main thing to point out here is since 2017, we've overdoubled, doubled our overdoses in 2018. That's through the first week in November, so we still have several weeks left before we get all our numbers, and we've almost doubled our fatalities at this point. Narcan administration has obviously gone up as well. It's more readily available to combat overdoses and try to give people another opportunity to get treatment if they need to and bring them back. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move on in the presentation. So naloxone, a good way to kind of apparel of it is to an AED defibrillator for a heart attack. I know it's not going to change underlying condition, but it will help save a life and give an opportunity to get help. And that's why a lot of people need help, those that, and sometimes it takes an overdose to make people realize that. But the goal for North Carolina for naloxone is if you have someone in your life at risk for an overdose, no barriers to naloxone access, we're just to make sure it's readily available. So a little bit about naloxone. Narcan is a version that we have on site. It's administered nasally, four milligrams, as you can see there, prescription med used to treat opioid overdose. Works by reversing the effects of opioids by temporarily binding to the same brain receptors as opioids. It's a safe medication, few side effects, other than having withdrawals from opioids, and, as I mentioned, can be administered nasally or intramuscularly. This, I think this is a very important picture here with it showing how someone who may be going through pain, withdrawal, craving, dope sickness, or just boredom, end up taking some kind of opioid medication or something related for pain relief. You get the euphoria, the relief from the dope sickness, then it moves into nodding unresponsiveness, diminishing cognition, motor control, respiratory depression, which means the heart rate slows down, you actually have shallow breaths, and this is all taking place of one to three hours and then death. And what the narcan or naloxone does is within one to three minutes, it brings them out of that state. Obviously, if you're dead, it doesn't work, but if you're near death or have respiratory depression, it can bring you back, bring an individual back. So here's just a graph that shows unintentional opioid overdose deaths by opioid type. I want to point out here that the heroin and/or other synthetic narcotics, I'll talk a little bit about that moving on forward, is typically your car fentanyl and your fentanyl. That's now more readily available and very lethal. Then you have your commonly prescribed opioids, heroin, other synthetic narcotics that'll be mixed in with that, that's indicated in the lighter blue, and then your commonly prescribed opioids. I think the most important thing that this slide kind of points to is, or something to remember about this slide, obviously, 60% or greater than 60% of unintentional deaths are due to the heroin or synthetic narcotics, but a lot of people get started or addicted on these opioids from commonly prescribed medications they get from post-surgery or pain from a tooth or something of that nature. In fact, I remember years ago, I just had shoulder surgery recently, and I had knee surgery and stuff before, and I'd walk out of the office with a bottle of, this isn't narcotics, but this is just naproxone, as everybody knows, but walk out with a bottle of pills like this, and you'd have a month's supply. There you go, reduce your pain. But now I've found, you know, even my most recent surgery with the STOP Act, and I'll talk about that, they limit you to seven days post-surgery, five days acute, so that's one of the means of reducing it, the supply that's out there in the community. A lot of people get, used to get hooked on it, still do, through prescription pills, and then next thing you know, they need that high, and they're turning to these other forms of narcotics, whether it's synthetic or heroin. Talked about car fentanyl. Fentanyl is 100 times stronger than morphine. That's why it's so potent. That's cut with some kind of other drug, very potent. In fact, it's a pack of Splenda right here. Splenda's actually made in the USA, if you didn't know that, but it's a pack of Splenda. This amount here, if it was fentanyl, could kill 500 people just in that little pack of that ingredients. Doesn't take a lot to actually impact people's lives and cause death. Why fentanyl? Smoke fentanyl or staggering. If you bought $1,000 worth of product, chopped it up for retail, you know heroin purchasing, this is example here from Bloomberg, Goport, Mississippi, you can make a profit of $4,000. If you got it from China, $7.8 million profit. It's pretty lucrative. That's why it's rampant across the United States and our counties and our state. Doesn't just affect adults, it affects high school students as well. This is from 2013 to 2015. 20% of North Carolina high school students have reported using prescription opioids recreationally. Then, of course, sniffing glue, cocaine, crack the steroids, but prescription drugs is by far greater utilization in the high schools, and it's just readily available. They go to their mom and dad's grandma's cabinet and find it, and that's how they get started on using some of these opioids. These are some, this is map just kind of dictates some of the distribution kits in North Carolina, kind of shows you, gives you an idea where that is being distributed. We've got 96,500 kits, estimated kits distributed. This is just from the Harm Reduction Coalition. There are other kits that are made available, and I'll speak to that a little bit later. In this actual pic here, you can see New Hanover and Buncombe County had a big issue there, so you'll see more naloxone distributed because their overdose rates were much higher in those communities. I think Guilford's in there as well as Wake. Bigger population, easier access, and you'll see those numbers. Reversals with naloxone reported in North Carolina Harm Reduction, 12,000 community reversals reported. Again, you look at that, the darker, on the legend there, the darker color indicates higher number of reversals. Back up, that's as of 10/31/2018. Law enforcement's been actively involved in carrying naloxone. We've got almost, we've got 90% of the counties, only about 10 counties that are not currently carrying naloxone because they run into these situations quite often. That shows agencies carrying naloxone, agencies reporting reversals, and 1,400 total reversals reported by law enforcement, so. And that number's gone up since 2015, and we're still not done with 2018. So, Strengthen Opioid Misuse Prevention STOP Act. Commissioner McCroy, excuse me, Governor McCroy signed the Good Samaritan law in 2013. This was kind of on top of that, Strengthen Opioid Misuse Prevention Act. General Statute 2017-74 was passing unanimously by both houses, signed by Governor Roy Cooper on June 29th, '17. So, obviously, we're targeting controlled substances under that, Schedule 2s and 3s, which are a lot stronger opioids. The idea behind the Strengthen Opioid Misuse Prevention is smarter prescribing. I mentioned earlier about post-surgery, seven days, five days if you have acute pain, whereas before, you can get big bottles of pills, hand it out to you, and send you on your way. So keeping it off the streets, keeping it out of people's hands, that's one way to hopefully reduce this misuse. Doctor shopping is obviously, we have a way of now, checks and balances, where there's a state prescription database. People are supposed to register when they provide this, so if you go to a different provider, they can pull it up and know, you're getting prescriptions here, you're getting prescriptions there, wait a minute. Doctor shopping is supposed to limit that as well. Smarter dispensing, universal registration reporting, real-time reporting. I think everything's moving that way as we're looking at whole person care for individuals. Renew commitment, treatment recovery, saving lives, improve health, save money by investing in local treatment recovery services. Bottom line is to reverse overdoses and save lives. And that's the premise behind the Strengthen Opioid Misuse Prevention Act. So a little bit more detail on this. Community naloxone distribution. Session law 2017-74, as I mentioned, House Bill 243. Extended standing orders for opioid antagonists to community health groups. A practitioner acting in good faith and exercising reasonable care may directly or by standing order prescribe an opioid antagonist to any governmental or non-governmental organization, including a local health department, law enforcement agency, or any, or an organization that promotes scientifically proven ways of mitigating health risks associated with substance use disorders and other high-risk behaviors for the purpose of distributing through its agents the opioid antagonist to a person at risk of experiencing opioid-related overdose or a family member, friend, or other person in a position to assist a person at risk of experiencing an opioid-related overdose. And this is part of the North Carolina's Opioid Action Plan 2017-21. Focus areas, public health's heavily involved with increasing community awareness and prevention. Number four, making naloxone widely available and link overdose survivors to care. We do currently have it at the Health Department, but it's also in the community through EMS. Police Department has it readily available, as I understand as well, so it falls in line with the North Carolina's Opioid Action Plan. So a little bit about the Health Department's naloxone-Narcan distribution. Cardinal Innovations donated naloxone kits to our Health Department for distribution. Kits are provided to the opioid user, family members, friends, partner of active users for the purpose of providing greater access to naloxone and reducing overdoses. Those indeed may present in any existing program that we have at the Health Department. Meet with the staff or they may call and make a standalone appointment through our Adult Health and naloxone-only visit. Now, there is not a fee associated with this naloxone screening, education, provision of overdose rescue kit, which includes naloxone. So when someone comes in through our clinic, we're going to sit down, talk to them, find out if they need a referral, find out if they need some assistance, if we can make that referral, talk to them about overdose, talk to them about Narcan, try to educate them, and if they need assistance or help to get off this opioids or get out of this addiction and get them the help they need. Health Department does not dispense naloxone kits on site. They're made available by prescription standing order only for pickup at a local pharmacy. Again, that standing order was in place 2017 for all Health Departments to provide this. Any individual who requests naloxone kit, whether it's initial kit or any other subsequent refill, must receive screening and education from the Health Department clinic provider or am before a kit's actually ordered. So we want to make sure they have that contact time, that face time, that they need a referral somewhere, need some help or assistance in other ways, other means, and we can provide that information to them. Thirty-six local Health Departments are currently distributing naloxone. I dare say there's probably more that just haven't reported throughout the community. A lot of those probably initially provided naloxone, had it provided through Harm Reduction or some other organization. We're fortunate that Cardinal Innovations was willing to donate this to our county. I think Union County's another county. There's probably, I think, Cabarrus County, not Cabarrus, there's some other counties in our region that very well probably has some donated as well from Cardinal Innovations. And this is just a resource guide on naloxone, and we can find additional information for general public or whoever wants this information. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, David. Commissioner, do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do. We're number one in overdoses, right? Where are we in deaths? In deaths associated with overdoses?
Are we ranked?
Jennifer, have you seen the rate on that lately?
Not specifically deaths, just a little bit of...
Interesting to know how well we're doing saving lives already.
Sure. Usually, Commissioner, usually if you can keep overdoses down, obviously, you can reduce the chances of death. So usually, they go hand in hand, but what the Harm Reduction Reports and Injury Prevention Reports to us is usually typically overdoses and whatnot. But we do have some deaths associated, I think, went back. But if you look at, as a rate, you know, I know we had 14 deaths of fatalities so far this year. Now, how we rank other counties, I can certainly, we can certainly look at that if you want that information. Yes, sir.
One other question. What's in the naloxone kit besides naloxone?
There's a lot of handouts, information, just educational information and whatnot, and we're trying to provide also local resources in the community. There's more and more resources coming available in the community. It's slow in progressing that way, but I'm talking outside of a governmental entity. Some nonprofits have stepped up in the community, and we do have a resource guide that we're trying to keep updated and get out on the website, and this is information that'll be included as well, several documents and other sources they can read up. And it's not just for someone that's using, but it's also for a family member if they want to get educated as well on this.
And is it just one dose of naloxone? I mean, it's just usable one time?
Yes, sir. One time. They want another one, they have to come back through and hear the talk again, so.
Is there a screening process to make sure they're not abusing it?
Well, basically, it's an office visit, so I would say with the implementation, since we've implemented this, we've only had a handful. I'm talking on one hand come through. Typically, most users probably wouldn't come through our clinic. They would look at it as a barrier. The nice thing about what we can provide is we can provide it at no cost versus if you go to a pharmacy, it's going to cost you $35 or something like that. We're trying to limit the barriers in the community where if somebody wants this or a family member themselves, they can come and get it at no cost. They are going to have to go through that process, though, of talking to a nurse or practitioner to get it.
In the Health Department, give them a prescription?
We write the prescription, but we do not hand it out at the Health Department.
Goes to the...
A local pharmacy, yes, sir, handles that for us. Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have...
Commissioner Law.
The dose pack that you hand out...
Yes, sir.
What would the cost of that be?
I'm thinking, I've heard estimated cost, $35 or something of that nature for a single dose of naloxone or Narcan or something of that nature. Yes, sir.
If you had, let's say, a parent come in and get...
Yes, sir.
One of the kits, and they come back again the next week, I mean, is there anything we do each time other than counsel the person that gets? I mean, if somebody kept coming back, coming back, coming back?
It's a good question, and the only way I can try to put that in perspective, if it's my son or daughter that is having this issue, I'm going to keep coming back and give them every chance I can till I can get them off this stuff. But I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner, and I hate to speculate, but obviously, they desperately need help if they're coming back routinely. Have not ran into that yet, but we do know through EMS that there's folks that'll go out and they're overdose time and time again. I mean, just hear stories like that. I don't think that's necessarily the norm, but it does happen, as I understand.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morgan.
How many kits are available? Have they gave us like a set number? And once those kits are expired, are you, is this program going to continue using taxpayer dollars, or will this be the end of it?
Was it 200 kits, Jennifer?
About 200 kits.
200 kits, and I think there'd be plenty of grants. There's no intention of using county dollars to purchase any at this time. We're looking for grants and other means to support this program, and we're hoping that Harm Reduction or somebody else will donate these kits in the future and, you know, to not have to support us with county dollars. And as we move forward, we'll plan on that, but I think we've got some time on that between now and then. This new grant that we applied for is completely separate from this right here. This is just something that was donated through Cardinal, and a lot of Health Departments are already providing, so we'll have to certainly evaluate moving forward if we want to continue this. If we have a good response, if not, then maybe we need to look at another means of trying to get this Narcan out into the community if we're not getting a good response through our clinic.
What is the closest detox center? I understand, I know it's not one in the county, obviously, but...
Not to mind, not Cabarrus is the first thing that comes to mind. Jennifer, you're more of a subject matter expert. Is that how you understand it, Cabarrus County?
Davidson, Cabarrus, Davidson, Monroe.
Cabarrus and Davidson, Monroe. And I do realize that I've heard rumor, and I guess I probably shouldn't speculate, but they're trying to look at some short-term, I believe, was it Nazareth that opened up a short-term facility?
I don't know if it's detox. I think it's Suboxone.
May just be Suboxone. Yes, sir. So, and that's part of the issue, you know, getting people into the care they need and, you know, having a detox center. A lot of folks have trouble traveling, getting from point A to point B to get the assistance they need, and there's a waiting list and things of that nature. So it's a plethora of issues to get in treatment as well. Cost is another factor, so.
Are those facilities government or private facilities?
It's an MCO, managed care organization, like some of your Cardinals and your other organizations like that. So they're basically just, kind of like how Medicaid is moving for us, that they already have that in place where it's a managed care organization that provides these services. Again, some of this is Medicaid, but if you're private pay a lot of times, it's very costly. If you're uninsured, forget about it. You're paying lots of money out of pocket to try to get into treatment. A lot of people, these folks don't have the funds to get the treatment they need. So a lot of systematic changes need to take place, and it's going to take everybody in the community to try to chip away at this to make some positive changes, and even things at the top, as we've seen legislative changes are slowly taking place, federal and state level, to try to address this issue.
What is the cost of, like, go to detox, say somebody's uninsured? I mean, I hear it's outrageous, but I've never heard a cost.
I've heard $60,000. That's just from when I was in Carteret County, and when we were working very closely with law enforcement and our Attorney General Josh Stein, we had these conversations, but we were evaluating, and it was like $60,000 to get treatment. Yes, sir. And that's pretty excessive, just for me anyway, but, so it's tough, it is.
Any other questions, comments, or...
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Swain.
Well, maybe two. I know that some counties are working with their managed care partners to establish these facilities within their counties. Have we worked with Cardinal to do that? I know... I know I may be speaking, it's secondhand knowledge, but I'm pretty sure Moore County just opened one that's managed by their MCO, and their MCO put something like twelve million dollars is the number I heard into it. Have we tried to reach out to Cardinal? I know we have a representative on Cardinal that we appoint as Commissioners, but...
I've talked to Reed Thornburg. We actually speak pretty routinely, but we haven't gotten so far as the planning stages of what can be done locally. Jennifer, you may have a little bit more information because you've been in the county a little bit longer and working on this than I know the past four or five years, but as far as actually building something here locally, I don't think, nothing, I haven't heard anything, Commissioner. I'm not aware of anything right now at this time.
I mean, I'm more than willing to reach out from my position because I think that's what we need to do. I think handing this out is a tool in the toolbox that I personally don't necessarily agree with, but I'm not going to stop it. But I think we need to be pushing from our positions up here, we need to be pushing, trying to go and take that next step to make sure our county's fixing this problem. And if that's putting pressure on somebody to get a facility in our county, if we can do it, I think we need to do it.
Well, I think Commissioner's support would certainly probably make a lot more waves towards making that happen, but...
Just let us know who we need to talk to. I mean, I'll be glad to reach out.
Yes, sir.
I can't speak for anybody else up here, but I'll be glad to reach out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman. I am on that Cardinal board, and I've reached out with Reed and had several conversations with Reed and, you know, with the crisis that we have in Stanley County. So, you know, that conversation has been had, it's just, you know, there's a lot of details and we're working on some stuff, so hopefully maybe some more information to follow.
Any other questions, comments? David, I ought to say, I hate we're even having to have this conversation.
So do I.
I don't even know where to begin to, you know, help in, you know, my position other than look to some of our folks that I would look to as experts out here in the audience, and thank you for everything you guys are doing, and we're going to continue praying that y'all do good work. And I can, you know, I'm coming off this board soon, but if I can ever do anything to help anybody. I haven't had to experience it, you know, personally in my family, but I know a lot of folks have, and I grew up with a lot of folks that I wish were in a little different situation than what they are now, that were different person years ago. And anyways, we'll keep praying for you, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item three, EDC Project Flat Incentives and Grant Administration Contract. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The new food processing manufacturing operation is considering a location in Norwood. The investment will exceed half a million, lead to the creation of twelve jobs. The project has tenderly received approval to submit a two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar forgivable CDBG loan application to assist them with the building improvements. The county and the town will be responsible for covering the grant administration, and the environmental assessment fee is total thirty thousand. The town of Norwood will actually be the lead applicant and will actually contract, and the funds will run through the town of Norwood. And the county is proposed to contribute sixty-five percent of that total fee, nineteen five, towards assisting Norwood with this project to get those twelve jobs with this food processing plant in Norwood. So we're asking the board to consider approving the grant administration contract with Hardigan Management Services and the appropriation of nineteen five to the town of Norwood. And those, that funding's already budgeted in the EDC budget, so there's no need for a budget amendment at this time.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions from Commissioners? I guess you just need a motion to approve, Andy.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I would make that motion to approve the grant administration contract with Hardigan Management Services.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item five, consent agenda. Excuse me, excuse me, item four, checking off too fast. Yeah, trying to get the next meeting. Interlocal agreement with the City of Locust for Water and Sewer Services. Presenter Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. City of Locust would like to formalize interlocal agreement for the provision of water and sewer services into the areas of Locust within their corporate limits that are not within Stanley County. As you know, Locust has some areas within their corporate limits that are actually in Cabarrus County. And so they're wanting to have something in place that sort of memorializes the fact that we will provide them with water and sewer. So we presented a draft of an agreement that Locust is good with. There will be, we believe, because we put this together, Locust just sent this to us, I think, Thursday, and so it still needs a little bit more review from our attorney and staff, but I had some conversations with, I made some proposed changes to it and shared those with Caesar, their city manager, and he didn't have, and their attorney, and they didn't have any issues with what we, the changes we made that were more substantive. So what we're asking the board this evening is to consider approving this interlocal agreement, but allowing and authorizing staff to make any changes to the agreement that are in the best interest of the county. Because there are some, there's some areas where the sentence may have been repeated twice, and just some other grammatical types of changes that need to occur, not necessarily substantive, but we need, we just need to tighten it up before we execute it. So we'd ask you for your approval and just the ability to make any changes in our best interest.
Thank you, Andy. Questions? Vice Chairman McIntyre.
Make a motion to approve the proposed interlocal agreement, authorize staff to make any changes to proposed interlocal agreement in the best interest of the county.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Lauter. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item five, consent agenda. Got a motion from Commissioner Lawhan, second from Commissioner Swain. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Public comment, got one that signed up. Roger, I think, Mr. Hudson, I think you're the only one I've got signed up. Would you like to come on up to the front?
Just speaking briefly on the Narcan. I know most of you guys, and you know the family, and you know I've lost a son to it. Prior to that, it was ugly names I called addicts, just like a lot of people do. Had no sympathy at all for any of them, felt like they were pretty much worthless parts, and if they were going to die, they were going to die. And then I lost my son. Darlene and I were at the beach, and we hear, we get a call, and something I just cannot get over, and this will hit home to everybody here that has children. And the emergency folks that were there said, called me on the phone and said, Will's dead. That's something that rings through my mind daily, some more, some less, but it's every day, Will's dead. I blame Will, but it sure would have been nice if the Narcan would have saved him. It may not have, who knows? But my opinion prior to this was, who cares? If you had a Panther Stadium full of fans and they would vote their heart of who doesn't care, it would just be pathetic. I go out every day and hear it, dopehead, crackhead, pothead, whatever, and that was me. Had no sympathy at all. And I know Commissioner Eifert's probably got his reasons, said he wasn't, what was the word you used, something you didn't like or...
I think that was me.
Oh, that was you, I'm sorry. I was going to blame Scott.
I'm okay.
And you said, what was it that you said?
I just don't agree with, I don't agree with giving it out. We're not supposed to engage, but I'll talk to you.
From an EMT side of it, I go to these houses, and I see it multiple times. I go to the same house...
Makes you sick.
Over and over and over again, and I give Narcan because we have to. I'm legally obligated to give it by the credential that I hold. So I, I just have a moral, and I've never experienced it like you. I'll admit that, but, you know, that's where I am, but I'm never going to vote against it because I do see it as a tool in the toolbox.
And there's reasons, there's not a good answer. So when you said that, I didn't take that the wrong way. I took it as there's just so many different reasons that you can come up with why you just keep on, same person over and over and over. At what point does he stop? You've got funding that goes on, but you're married, I'm a son, and children, and trust me, if one of your children or grandchildren needed a Narcan, you would be in the same boat I'm in. What I'm trying to do is change the way we think about addicts. Not crackhead, not pothead, whatever, alcohol or whatever. We're all thinking the wrong way. It's never going to improve until that changes, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. So knowing that, if it rings in your head this week is Will's dead, that could be your son, your child, and by God, you would want one Narcan there. You might not want to fund a billion, but you'd love to have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you for your perspective. Is there any other, any other public comment? Anyone else? Anyone else here wishing to speak? If not, we'll start with board comments. Commissioner Lauter. Commissioner Eifert.
I got a few, sir. I'm going to keep it brief. Wanted to say, wow, four years, I just can't believe four years has passed that by that fast. Want to thank my lovely wife, Tracy, for understanding and patience when we had to go to meetings and committee meetings and Commissioners' meetings, and look forward to spending a little bit more time with her. I'm not sure she has the same sentiment on that, but I want to thank the citizens of Stanley County for putting me in this position four years ago. I want to thank our employees, we've got some here tonight, and department heads, you guys are the best. You make Stanley County what it is. To this board, I appreciate everything that this board has done in our previous boards, and Commissioner McIntyre, I will pick on you just a minute. I know me and you hadn't agreed on everything, but I certainly appreciate you and respect the many years of service to the county, so thank you very much. My parents always told me something I try to live by is, you know, always leave it better than you found it. And I think this board has done that. If you look at some of the things we've done over the last four years, and I hope and pray that the next board will continue that. To our clerk, Tyler, thank you so much for making sure we get the emails and where we're supposed to be, when we're supposed to be there, and for keeping our candy bowl full. To our county attorney, Jenny, thank you so much for making sure every i is dotted, every t is crossed, and with all the litigation we've had in the past, thank you so much for all your, all your hard work. And last but not least, our county manager, just, you know, when you've got seven different personalities up here, it's like herding cats sometimes, and Andy, you do a great job, and I certainly appreciate you and what you do, and most of all, I appreciate your friendship. Mr. Chairman, again, thank you so much for allowing me just to be a small part of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. Commissioner Swain.
No comment tonight.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd just like to wish all y'all going off the very best, and it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of y'all, and I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels to anyone who's traveling.
Commissioner Lawhan.
I would like to commend the Commissioners that are rotating off the board, anybody that's willing to serve in a public service office like this, I commend you. Thank you for your service.
Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I said at the beginning that I enjoyed being a county commissioner. A lot of people look at me like I'm crazy, but I really have, and I admitted to say that part of the reason that I have is because of the folks I've worked with, this board and many, many others. For the past few years, every two years, there's a new face, seems like, on the board, but the staff, Andy and Tyler and Jenny, and all of our heads of departments, just fantastic to work with, and I'm going to miss it. And I'm leaving, but I'm not going to be too far, so if you need something, give me a holler. I'll do my best.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre. My final comments, I'd like to say to each and every one of you, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with each one of you. We don't always agree on everything, but I think we've, over the last four years, been able to make some good decisions and point Stanley County in a good direction. It's been a lot of fun, been a lot of difficult work at times. Staff members, Jenny... Andy. Tyler, everyone out there, Toby, Brian, who else out there? Chris, everyone else, it's been great working with you guys. Appreciate your service at Stanley County. Stanley County means a lot to me. Look forward to, in the future, you know, doing things and working for the county, just like this issue that we talked about tonight. Hopefully, some of these issues we can resolve in a much better way. I think that's all I've got. Thanks for everyone, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion adjourned, sir.
Got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? A second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor?
All right.